So I'll call the meeting in order. And if our honored veteran would read us in the pledge. Go ahead, Jim. I didn't mean to put you on the spot.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, Mr. Pertle was a senior sergeant in the Army. Thank you for your service, Mr. Pertle. Roll call, please.
Trustee Pearson.
Present.
Trustee Vance.
Here.
Treasurer Delahay.
Here.
Clerk Reedsman.
Here.
Supervisor Kramer.
Here.
All present, we have four of them.
Board members, any conflict of interest?
No.
No.
No. Right now, we'll start the public hearing on Navinoy Trail. This is for a road that goes from Old Onaway Road to the boat wants entrance. And at a public hearing, we just kind of listen. So if there's someone that has a comment about Navinoy Trail, just step right up to the podium and address the board.
Make sure you say your name because we have to keep track of every person who comes up by name.
Yes, sir.
Bill Weber, I live on Navinoy Trail.
Hi, Bill.
The part that isn't being considered for paving. And we have enough signatures to do the rest of Navinoy Trail. And I'd like to know how that's going to play out.
Thank you, Bill. Anyone else? Yes, sir.
Glen Rose. I'm on the asphalt side, I guess I will say.
Hi, Mr. Rose.
So my concern, I guess, is the sewer. Is that going to be done on that side of town anytime soon? Because I can't see spending money for asphalt if we're going to rip it up and run sewer down there. I'd rather wait out the dust storm because I'm one of the heaviest dusters, I guess I'll call it, from the north launch. Because if the sewer's coming along in a year, two years, three years, I can't see putting it down and then ripping it right back up. So that's my concern.
Thank you, Mr. Rose. Anyone else?
Dustin Bebe.
Yes, sir.
I live on Inverary Trail down at the very end.
Yes, sir.
I'm curious of the implications for me because we barely are on that road. I mean, if we are talking about doing the whole neighborhood, I guess I'd be all for it, but I'm still curious on how all that would play out.
Okay.
Because our road's terrible anyway, especially this time of year.
Anyone else? Thank you, sir. Okay, the public hearing is now closed. You can see me after the meeting, I'll answer all your questions that I can. We'll go to the next agenda item. Do I hear a motion to approve the meeting and agenda?
Any motion?
Is there a second?
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Public comment on agenda items? Is there any public comment on agenda items? Public comment is closed. Do I hear a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion now.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Folks, we're going to try and go as rapidly as we can and still do our due diligence because we have a lot today. Do I hear a motion for Navinoy Trail Special Assessment Resolution Number Two?
Hold on.
While we're waiting, part of the bills that we approved, I also handed you the last minute ones.
I'll make that motion for the special assessment resolution on Navinoy, number two.
So trustee Vance makes the motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, Mr. Reedsman seconds. I'll read the special assessment resolution, number two. Please bear with me. Township of Tuscorora, County of Sheboygan, State of Michigan, minutes for a regular meeting of township board of the township of Tuscorora, County of Sheboygan, State of Michigan, held in the township on February 6, 2024, at 7:00 PM Eastern Time. Members present and absent, the following preamble and resolution was offered by member Vance and supported by member Reedsman, whereas the township board of the township of Tuscorora, County of Sheboygan, State of Michigan, tentatively declared its intent to undertake certain public improvements as described in Exhibit A attached here too and made a part hereof pursuant to Act 188 Public Acts of Michigan, 1954, as amended, and a duly filed petition in support thereof. And whereas, after doing legal notice, the township board met on February 6, that's today, at 7:00 PM, and heard all persons and interests therein, had set first public hearing with respect to the petition, the proposed public improvements in the special assessment district therefore. And whereas the township board has decided to proceed with the public improvements described on Exhibit A attached here too. And whereas the township board is prepared to approve the special assessment district described in Exhibit B attached here too and made a part hereof, now therefore be it resolved, the township board hereby determines that, one, the petition heretofore filed with the township board, signed by record owners of land constituting more than 50% of the total frontage upon that portion of the road being improved in, and said special assessment district is legally sufficient for the township board to proceed in accordance with the act. And, two, the public improvements described in Exhibit A attached here too and made a part hereof are necessary for the health, safety, and welfare of the township, and that said public improvement shall be made and completed pursuant to the act. Two, the township board hereby approves the plan and estimate of cost for the public improvement in the estimated total sum of $60,000 as prepared for the township by the Sheboygan County Road Commissioner and filed with the township clerk. Of the fore, said total cost of the project, the estimated sum of $31,500 will be spread against the here and after maintained special assessment district pursuant to the act. The township hereby finally determines that said special assessment district shall consist of all lots and parcels of land described in Exhibit B attached here too, and that the district shall be designated 2024 Navinoy Special Assessment District, and that the existence of the district shall be maintained until all special assessments payable on the role here and after described, and any bonds issued in anticipation of such special assessment have been paid. Township supervisor is hereby directed to make or cause to be made a special assessment role, and which shall be described, all parcels of land to be assessed as above set forth with the names of the owners thereof, if known, and the total amount to be assessed against each parcel of land, which amount shall be a relative portion of the whole sum to be levied against all parcels of land in the district as the benefit to such parcel of land bears to the total benefits of all parcels of land in the district. Number five, excuse me, when the township supervisor shall complete the special assessment role, the township supervisor shall affix thereto a certificate stating that said role was made pursuant to a resolution of the township board adopted on the date of adoption of this resolution, and that making the assessment role, the supervisor has, according to the supervisor's best judgment, conformed in all respects to the directions contained in said resolution and the statutes of the state of Michigan. And the supervisor shall then report the special assessment role with the certificate attached thereto to the township board. All resolutions and parts of resolutions insofar as they conflict with the provisions of this resolution be and the same hereby are rescinded. Is there any, oh, I'm sorry, Exhibit A, acquiring and construction, road improvements consisting generally of reconstructing a road and related improvements right away, and attachments thereto. And Exhibit B is the map. Is there any discussion? I would like to say that I appreciate all the folks on Navinoy who signed the petitions. It was citizen-driven, and we were able to get $25,000 from the Sheboygan County Road Commission to keep the cost down. Township's throwing in 10%, of which we've already provided a down payment, so to speak, that we can get back if we don't proceed, but that's how we got our $25,000. So I want to thank everyone for doing that. The special assessment role, we'll talk about in a little bit. Is there any further comments or discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Yes. Treasurer Delahay.
Aye.
You, Steve Vance.
Aye.
Supervisor Kramer.
Aye.
Trustee Pearson.
No.
Clerk Reedsman.
Aye.
That's four to one.
Okay. Special assessment number three. Is there a motion for the special assessment resolution, number three?
I'll make that motion.
Trustee Vance makes that motion. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Treasurer Delahay seconds the motion. I'll read the resolution. Township of Tuscorora, County of Sheboygan, State of Michigan, Minnesota, special of a regular meeting of the township board of the township of Tuscorora, State of Michigan, held on February 6, at 7:00 PM Eastern Standard Time, with the members present, the following preamble resolution was offered by member Vance and supported by member Delahay, whereas the township board of the township of Tuscorora, County of Sheboygan, State of Michigan, by resolution, determined to inquire and construct, acquire and construct the public improvements described in Exhibit A previously read and made a part thereof, and assess the cost thereof to the property benefiting by said improvements, all in accordance with Act 188 Public Acts of Michigan, 1954, as amended. And whereas the supervisor has prepared and reported to the township board a special assessment role, assessing part of the costs of said improvements to the property benefiting thereby with the supervisor's certificate attached thereto. And the township board desires to set the date for a public hearing to review the special assessment role and hear any objections thereto. Now therefore be it resolved, said special assessment role shall be filed with the office of the township clerk and shall be available for public examination during regular working hours and regular working days of the township. The township board shall meet at the township hall on March 5, 2024, at 7:00 PM Eastern Standard Time. The week's time and place, township board shall review said special assessment role and hear any objections thereto. The township clerk is hereby authorized and directed to cause notice of such hearing to be published twice prior to said hearing in a Sheboygan newspaper, a general circulation in the township, the first publication to be at least 10 days before the time of hearing, and shall cause notice of said hearing to be mailed by first-class mail to all record owners of or persons in interest in property. And the special assessment district has shown on the last township tax assessment records of the township at least 10 full days before the date of said hearing. Said notice shall be in substantially the form attached herein as Exhibit B. All resolutions and part of resolutions insofar as they conflict with the provision of this resolutions be and the same hereby are rescinded. Is there any discussion? So basically, what we call the front lot owners that will be directly on those lots will be assessed approximately $800, and everyone else in the subdivision will be assessed $390 upon completion of the project, assuming that all costs come in as they're supposed to come in. Additionally, that would be, if it's done this summer, it would be done on, it would be assessed on winter taxes of 2024. Because we were able to get help from the Sheboygan County Road Commission, we will not have to go out and get a bond because it'll be a one-time payment by property owners, and that saved us about $4,500 to $5,000 just for that bond. Is there any further discussion? Clerk will call the roll, please.
Supervisor Kramer.
Yes.
Clerk Reedsman.
Yes.
Treasurer Delahay.
Yes.
Trustee Vance.
Yes.
Trustee Pearson.
Yes.
That's five thousand zero.
Okay. Our next item on the agenda are sewer issues. Before we start, we got that thing ready, right? Representative Cam Cavett, our local state representative, was going to come tonight, but he was unable to make it because of being in session in Lansing. So he's asked us to play a one-minute video about our sewers. It's awful salt.
You have video, no sound.
Working with you this evening, but my focus is down here in Lansing right now, working hard for you. One of the ways I've done that is trying to use my position on the Eagle Budget, the Appropriations Committee, to try and get some activity with these permits. I know they've been a slow rolling in for a long time, but I'm pretty confident some new news is going to break here soon, and some things are getting ready to happen. I'd like to congratulate all the leadership there in your township who so successfully got those federal dollars to come in, and now we'll get the permits hit, and things are going to really happen. I'm a big fan of Tuscorora and Indian River community. Many of you know that I live in Moana Township just to the north of you, and I used to work for Inland Lake Schools for a lot of years, back with Dale Reeder and Frank Cole. So I am a big fan of your community and just proud to be part of this. You know, I often say that I can't represent without relationship, and I'm fortunate to have good relationships with so many of you. So it's a privilege representing you down in Lansing, and I will continue to do so. Keep in touch, God bless, and thank you, Tuscorora Township. Thank you very much.
The good news is, we did get a major permit today for the Phase One and Phase Two sewer project, and I would expect to get the Phase One permit for the collection system, which I call the digging part, where, you know, you're tearing up the road and the neighborhood. So I want to introduce Aaron Nordman from Performance Engineering. He's going to go up and address the board and talk us through this process. Thanks for coming, Aaron.
Sure.
And board members, if you have any questions, just speak up.
Yeah, hi. As you saw from Mr. Cavett's little video there, and as Bob referenced, legislators in this community have taken an active role in kind of pushing some of our permitting issues, and they did shake loose the permit for construction of the wastewater plant expansion. Got the permit issued this morning, and then this afternoon, we had another teleconference with the permit engineer for the collection system, the digging guy, and he assured us that, yep, he's going to be issuing that this week also. So what we want to do is we want to get all our ducks in a row here so that we can get this project out to bid. And what we've done is we've taken the Phase One digging project, and we broke it into two contracts. One is gravity sewer, which is mainly the neighborhoods back here on this side of the river, and then a low-pressure sewer contract, which would be Columbus Beach and Prospect, and then the bore under the river. So we'd have those two contracts, and then we'd have a third contract, that is for the wastewater treatment plant expansion. The wastewater treatment plant expansion integrates basically all three of your funding sources, so all of your grant projects would be moving forward at this point. It'd be the EPA, the USDA, and your Eagle SPH one that you got there. So what we're proposing to you is, if you would give us an authorization to go out to bid on these projects, subject to receipt of our last permit and approval by the funding agencies, then we would like to put this out starting basically Friday, if we get our approvals in order. We would advertise it for about 30 days. We would have a pre-bid meeting at the wastewater treatment plant, so the bidders can familiarize themselves with the conditions there on February 22nd is what we're proposing. We've talked to the operator, Tammy, and she's available for that, and if anybody from the board would like to attend that one, or propose alternate dates. And then we're proposing that bids for the three contracts would be due on March 8th, that's Friday, after your regular board meeting. And we're proposing to open these up here in succession, 10, 10:30, and 11. And what we're asking is that a member of the board or a deputy be the one that actually opens the bids and publicly reads them. And then at that point, we would take all the bid packages back to our office, we review them for inconsistencies or anything that would make them unable to be accepted, and then we would come back to the board for a recommendation for award. So we're hoping that you would be willing to schedule a special meeting that following week to hear the award recommendations.
I neglected to thank you for all your hard work. For those of you that don't know, this guy's been working the last three weekends, every Saturday and Sunday, just trying to get this moving forward. And I want to thank Senator Demousse and his staff, who's also on some EGLE oversight committees, for pushing this along. It's been, it's been a tough road.
It's been a long one.
So thank you for your perseverance. I think what you're asking us is you need a motion to authorize Performance Engineering to go out for bids subject to EGLE, USDA, and EPA approval.
Correct.
Would that be proper phrasing?
That would be correct, yeah.
So I'll make the motion to authorize Performance Engineering to go out for bids on behalf of Tuscorora Township, subject to EGLE, USDA, and EPA approvals. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay. Any discussion or questions?
Just repeat the motion again so I can get that down.
Sure. Authorize Performance Engineering to go out for bids on behalf of the township.
For Tuscorora Township?
Yeah. For bids on behalf of Tuscorora Township, subject to EGLE, USDA, and EPA approval.
Okay, one more timeline, USDA.
Sure. EGLE, USDA, and EPA approvals.
Got it.
All right. So let's have some real quick discussion. I know, you know, we don't have a lot of time, Aaron, and I know you've got to get it back, but could you just slow down and go over this timeline again? So we go out for bid maybe next Monday or something?
Yeah, so.
And that's how long?
That's about 30 days, yeah.
Okay.
So what will happen is, we will advertise in the local paper, right? And then the majority of bidders will receive bids through these online plan room exchanges. What we do is we upload electronic documents to all these plan rooms, and then most of the contractors have subscriptions or access to the plans that way, so they'll get email notifications that this project's available. We will also be very actively contacting contractors that we've worked with, that we know do this kind of work, soliciting them directly to draw up as much interest and as many bidders as we can possibly get on this. So we'll go through all that, and then on February 22nd, what we'll do is we'll meet at the site and then give the bidders an opportunity to see the plan, kind of familiarize themselves with the conditions that the work involves. They'll have the opportunity to come walk through the collection system areas, make sure everybody has a chance to ask whatever questions they may have. And throughout this process, you know, people have questions throughout the whole process. So we issue addenda to the bids that basically, you know, when somebody calls, we don't directly answer a question, we write it down, and then we issue an addendum that answers questions for all the bidders, so everybody gets the same information. And they have to acknowledge these addenda in the bid, so that you know everybody's familiar with everything that's been said to any of the bidders.
So in our earlier meeting, we talked about Phase Two. Could you talk about that?
Yeah, so Phase Two is also in, only said that one piece, part of Phase Two is the plant, and that's approved. The collection system part of Phase Two is still in review, and that review engineer was in the teleconference today asking some questions, he's been looking at it. But with the issuance of the wastewater plant, we had some back and forth that changed some of our flow and our basis of design numbers. So he is basically waiting for us to resubmit design information and make some modifications, and then he'll crank through and wrap up his review on the collection system for Phase Two. So if all that happens in the next two to three weeks, we put Phase Two out to bid in succession, so that hopefully at your April meeting, we're looking at the Phase Two contracts.
So what we're talking about on March 8th, and then us having a special meeting one week later.
Yes. Yes. It could be your Tuesday or whatever day you want that following week. But basically, we take the bids back on that Friday, we go through and make sure that everything's in order, and then, you know, the typical scenario is you recommend a word to the low bidder, unless there's some reason to exclude that bid. So then we'll come back here, make a recommendation. This will be the point, hope it's all within the 10%, and you move forward. If it's not, then you have to go through that process of additional hearing.
Any other questions?
Could you just state what is Phase One again? What territory or what portion of the city or township?
Yeah, so the low-pressure sewer contract is Columbus Beach, up Prospect to the river crossing, and then the gravity sewer contract would be Mac Avenue going north to the river, and then the neighborhood.
But not including Mac.
But not including Mac. And then the neighborhood north of Prospect there, Hillside, and back by the churches up there.
And then Phase Two would be what?
Mac Avenue and south.
To the Sturgeon River, including Sturgeon Island, correct?
Including Sturgeon Island, yeah.
Any other questions?
What is the comment?
Yeah.
Aaron, I want to thank you for your diligence on this. A lot of people do not realize that what you've gone through in the last probably month has been crazy. I mean, they send you a list of questions, let's say 10 to 12, you answer them, you get another list of like 20, then they come back and then say five or six more after that, and then you answer that, and then this last bit, we had 60, 60 more questions at the very end. It's like. It's like, how can you come up with 60 more questions at the very end of the project if you've been reviewing it all along? We've also dealt with people retiring and transferring and splitting workloads up at Eagle, which made things a lot more complicated. And so this has been a lot more complications than any of us could have imagined when we got into this. So I want to thank you for spending the night oil working on this, because I know you have, in order to try and get these deadlines as close as possible as you could. So thank you.
Yeah, I appreciate that. And you guys sticking with us too. It's been a long process. But ultimately, this is good news. And I mean, we kept everything, we're under budget on the design fees, everything's still coming together, so.
Under budget's always good.
Yes, that's right.
Yeah, thanks for coming. I appreciate it. It's nice to put the email names with the face, so.
Absolutely.
Is there any further discussion or comments?
Is there a quick summary of just next steps? I mean, I know you went through them, but just the summary, real quickly.
Yeah, so with approval to go out to bid, we will prepare the three contract packages. One will reside here at the offices, so anybody could come physically inspect them. There'll be electronic copies at all the plan rooms, and you can put links on your website if that's what you wanted to do. And we have a hard copy at our office also that anyone's welcome to see. And then they'll have a period of time where it's advertised, out to bid. We'll have a pre-bid meeting at the sites, and then bids will be due back on March 8th.
Hold on, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Clerk, take the roll, please.
Take the roll, okay. Let's start with Treasurer Dela.
Yes.
Clerk Winslow, yes. Trustee Vance.
Yes.
Trustee Pearson.
Yes.
Supervisor Kramer.
Yes. Motion passes.
Motion passes.
Thank you, Erin.
Well, thank you.
Have a good, have a good safe trip, Pat.
Let's give him a hand.
Our next item is the commercial sewer system. Is there a motion? In regards to rates?
Are these rates for the?
For our existing commercial system. We generally review these every year at this time. So I'll move that we increase the rates by 6%.
Except for the park. You want to do that separately?
Right.
Okay, got it.
Separate.
Did anybody second?
I'll second it.
Discussion? If you're good at this, go ahead.
It is what it is. There was a discussion some time ago to increase rates 6% year-over-year for about 10 years. We're going to stick with that plan for now. My hope is that with some economies of scale, we won't have to continue to do 6% year-over-year increases.
Yeah. And hopefully that's the case when we get everybody else online. The more folks we have online, the more efficient it becomes.
As we're subsidizing the sewer system right now, because the rates haven't reached the appropriate toll levels necessary, and so have been for the last several years. I can't recall how far back.
Quite a ways. So, yeah, we're using O&M money. I'm sorry, R and I money.
Yeah, this rate increase was established, the 6% rate increase was established years ago. It was presented by a former board and former treasurer and clerk. They went to a workshop, they figured it out. They came back and said, we have to make it self-funding eventually. So they came up with the 6%. And so unless the cost of living is higher than 6%, the 6% is the bottom line that we have to increase it to keep up with the cost and to try and make it more self-efficient. And like Jay was saying, we have been subsidizing it through other funding for now, but that has to stop because those rates, that money is supposed to be used for R and R repair replacement, not for the sewer itself. So that is why we're doing it the way we're doing it. It wasn't our choice, it was what was established several years ago. We're just staying with that program because it's the program that seems to work out mathematically. So I just want to give you some history on that.
Can this date, park stands at 3.4%.
Yeah, we'll get to that. Any further discussion?
I don't.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. I move that we increase the state park's O&M sewer fees in accordance with their contract at 3.4%.
I second that.
Okay, the discussion, just so you're aware, the contract with the state park, signed in 2015, limits us to what we decide to raise for everyone, or the CPIU, whichever is lower. And the CPIU for last year was 3.4%.
So we can't raise them any higher than 3.4 due to their contract stipulations.
Right. And that contract expires August 2025.
Yeah.
And then that'll go on a regular rate. Is there any more discussion?
No, I just hope we can get that resolved. She seems to, the representative from the park seems to think that we have to report on actual expenses. So she thinks it's 6% CPIU or recouping actual expenses, which would be a nightmare.
I'll read the contract that way, but.
Not either. That's why they're attorneys.
Yeah. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Next one, we were going to talk about the sewer special assessment district. But our bond counsel, Mr. Steve Man from Miller Campfield, asked for a delay to review some more figures. And I know Jane was going to check on some BSNA stuff. The next item is a change to the sewer ordinance, ordinance 28. There's a resolution in your packet. Is there a motion for the resolution?
I'll make that motion. I will support that motion.
Okay, I'll read the resolution. Motion by, seconded by, et cetera, ordinance 28, to amend the code of ordinances for Tuscoret Township to extend the date sewer bills are due and payable before interest or late fees are assessed. Tuscoret Township hereby ordains that section 50.112 of the Tuscoret Township Code is hereby amended to read as follows. Public Works, Chapter 50, Sanitary Sewer Use Administration and Enforcement, Section 50.112, Building and Collection. When system rates, fees, and charges are not timely paid, it is necessary to rebill or undertake other procedures required by the subchapter to prepare separate notices and accounts and undertake tasks that are not needed if they are timely paid. In addition, the other system users essentially subsidize the non-paying or late-paying users' use of the system. The system is not established, operated, or well-adapted to provide financing services for its users. Accordingly, charges are made to compensate the system for the costs incurred due to untimely payments. Bills will be rendered at such intervals as determined by Resolution of Township Board, but not less frequency than quarterly. Bills shall be due and payable without interest or late fees at such time after billing as is stated on the bill, provided not less than 30 days rather than 15 days, with 15 crossed out, shall be given for such payment after the billing date. Bills not paid by the due date shall bear interest at such rate and be subject to a rebilling fee as determined by the board. And that is?
That's the only change.
That's the only change.
So we went from 15 days grace period to a 30-day grace period.
Correct.
That's good for me.
So is there any discussion?
Well, just so everyone understands how we got here, I've had a number of conversations with people. Our mail now has to go through Grand Rapids, so literally if I send a bill from here just down the street, it's got to go to Grand Rapids and come back. When you mail the check, it's got to go to Grand Rapids and come back. 15 days is not working and seems a bit egregious at this point. So I think if we could just give people 30 days to make the payment, that gives them a little bit of breathing room. 15 days is kind of aggressive, especially for businesses that have to run bills through an accounting process and maybe cut checks once a month.
Any further comments? And there, the board, there will be a process, we'll have to revisit this. There will be some additional administrative steps that I'll take care of. Any further discussion?
I don't.
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Next one is policy book updates from our special meeting. Is there a motion?
Make a motion to move forward with this? Discussion?
Go ahead. I'm sorry, say it again.
I'll make a motion to move forward.
Okay, with chapters two, four, and nine?
Yeah.
I'll second that.
Okay. Discussion? Chapter two, we had help from the attorney on that one, if you recall. Chapter four was just.
Editing.
Editing the CIP. Chapter nine was new with regards to airport operations. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Next item, airport tie-down fees. Is there a motion for aircraft tie-down fees?
Is there an amount we're discussing?
Thank you, Erin.
I'll move that we charge a tie-down fee of $10 per day.
I'll second that.
Just for discussion, we require, I'm sorry, some airports are at $12 and $15, but the closest one I could find was the Sheboygan Airport just up the road here, and they charge $10 a night for a single engine. And they also have, you know, rates for two engines and turbos, but, you know, I think $10 is a good start. It's not a lot of money, but it's a start to get to revenue neutral. It would just involve us going out at the terminal and putting up a little setup like we do at the boat launch on our system. Any further discussion?
Yeah. I don't think $10 a day is egregious. I think that it's a fair amount. To me, asking for someone, right now, they're not paying any tie-down fees. So if someone comes in, they don't own a hangar or anything, and they just fly into the area and they tie down, it's for free. To me, it looks like they're taking advantage of the airport. Anywhere else, they'd be paying a tie-down fee. It's no different than if you go to a hotel or motel and you have more than two people in your room, you got to pay an extra per-person fee. It's traditional, you know? So I think that the fact that we're making them pay a little bit to help maintain the area is not asking too much. So I agree.
What about if we did like 10 a day or like 50 for the week?
It's just how complicated you want to make it.
Who's going to collect the fees, Pat?
It's going to be on the honor system, just like the boat launch.
Yeah, they're going to pay on the honor system. Who's going to collect? Who's going to empty the box?
The same guy who collects the boat launch fees.
We're trying to automate it. Sorry I asked a question. No, you're not, first off, you're not starting. Trying to automate it to either a QR code or a proxy card or a credit card reader. We thought we had it with an existing vendor called Point and Pay, but Point and Pay turned out to be Point Less Than Pay. But we're still working. I'm hopeful that by spring, we'll have both of that knocked out because the boat launch needs to come into the thing.
Any further discussion?
I'd be happy to, until we get it worked out, if you need help on behalf of the collective through the district and bond issues.
The issue with the boat launch is that it is a physical challenge to get the box lifted out of the bowler, the way that they built it. The laws, they built it for theft prevention, but it also prevents me from lifting it out by myself. It's a two-person job for me. I can get it back in, I just can't get it out.
Any further comments?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Parks truck. You can see in the correspondence, we got a request from the Parks Commission to purchase a truck. They gathered up a multitude of quotes, but with the help of Chief Temple, Doug was able to get a quote on the state contract. But I'm getting ahead of myself. Is there any kind of a motion on this parks truck?
I'll motion that we approve a, moving forward with the purchase of a truck for Parks.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, discussion? I did notice that this state contract is like 15,000 to 20,000, less than a regular new truck and even cheaper than a used truck.
Yeah. Yeah.
Why don't you explain what kind of truck it is?
It's a pickup truck with a dump bed.
One-time.
It's a one-time truck with a dump bed on it.
So.
Is there anyone here from Parks?
No, Doug couldn't make it. He had an emergency at the last minute.
And then nobody from the board?
No. No, I've tried to call the Parks chairman several times, and I can't get a response.
Did they have any recommendations on how this should be paid?
No, but I would think it needs to come out of, what's the name of that fund? The $66,000 fund?
It's just assigned funds within.
An assigned Parks fund. I would suggest it comes out of that with the remainder coming out of their regular I mean, this is a pretty hefty capital expenditure.
It's a very needed one. The truck that, I'll turn this up. The truck that Doug is driving around in is not safe. And I think it's held together with safety pins, Velcro, and baling wire right now. So we need to do something. And it's cheaper than buying a pickup truck here and a dump trailer there and all that stuff. This is the all-in-one, be a lot better for their uses.
I would like to see the Parks Commission agree to that source of funding.
I agree.
Agreed. Is there any fitting that needs to be done to this truck? In other words, one additional?
Glad you asked. At some point, they're gonna have to put a blade on that thing. And Doug tells...
Plow blade.
Yes, snow plow blade. And you're probably looking at, how much, Chief, 10?
10.
10,000, yeah.
10,000.
Yeah, about 10.
But we don't need to do that this fiscal year, correct?
Correct.
Well, now, they, if they order a new truck, it has to be built, so it, correct?
Yes.
Yeah, so it's gonna take some time. Did you want to amend your motion to require their
Approval?
concurrence with where the funding's coming from?
Perhaps so. I would like to amend my budget to move forward with the purchase contingent on approval from the Parks Board for funding.
Okay.
So...
For recommended funding.
So you have to either agree with the amendment or pull your second.
No, I agree with that, but I would just have a question. Chief?
Yes.
Do you know much about this truck? I'm not real familiar with trucks. So could you elaborate on it a little bit?
It's a Chevy one-time truck. It's had a, I believe, a three-yard dump box on it. It's being built, or will be built by Virger Chevrolet, which is my patrol cars. And I know the actual cost of the truck is about $28,000, and buying it through me, through the state bid, will get it for about $63,000.
It'll save about $25,000.
Yeah, that's, I just wanted to make sure that I was reading, looking at this correctly.
Brand's Bank New 2024 Chevy one-time truck.
It's about what we, what we look for, for standard issue for the landscaping company. However, we never buy brand-new ones. We never buy brand-new.
And if not electric?
You don't get a state subsidy that's like the Chevy.
And it's really amazing. I mean, I personally went through and looked for all these used trucks, and the used ones cost more than this.
Yeah.
They did do a good job of offering several alternatives, including a brand-new truck with the subsidy from the state.
Yeah, that was all Doug.
And you can't, you can't beat the deal, even with a used truck, so.
Gas or diesel?
Gas.
All in favor?
Well, we have to have a second?
We did.
On the amended, on the amended one?
She did.
Can you, okay.
Kim, you did.
Yeah, I did. Okay.
So, you know, I don't want a problem down the road, just so everybody understands that the Parks Commission has to agree that this funding is gonna come from that special fund of $66,000 with any overflow from their budget. Otherwise, the purchase will not be made. That's what we're saying, correct?
Correct.
And by the way, I'm assuming, which I didn't put in my motion, that we're purchasing the 2024 Silverado 3500 HDCC, four-wheel drive, through the state program.
Yes, ma'am.
I'll put it in minutes.
Okay.
Thank you all.
Are we gonna vote?
Did we vote? We didn't vote yet.
Let me restate the motion, then we'll vote. So a motion to approve a, whatever you had just said, Chevrolet Silverado truck.
With the dump bed?
For Parks with a dump bed. Contingent upon Parks Board agreeing to the recommendation for funding using assigned funds plus any over from their operating budget.
Correct. Anything else? Anything else? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Next one? How we have a, let me get to it. We have a real estate offer to look at. Is there a motion?
Are you looking for authorization or are you looking for approval to sell?
Approval to sell.
I'll move that we sell to Living Waters Global Methodist Church, Parcel A, attached in the survey, which appears to be the easement between the trail and their current location.
Correct. And there's a map in there for folks? I'll second that.
For $2,000?
Yes, for $2,000. Thank you, for $2,000.
I'll second that. Is there any discussion? I, I just would like to say, if you could please take a look at this map, folks. If you look at Parcel A, you know, we've been out there so many times. Parcel B and Parcel A are literally useless for parking because of the slope, the guy wires, and...
The size.
Yeah. And we're still gonna have our easement because we got a sewer line going through there that you can see if you ever want to put a sidewalk in from Martha Street to the other parking area of the trailhead, you can do that. So I appreciate the board considering this, and it's gonna mean a lot to those kids. And I have assurance from Chief Carpenter, they'll put the stakes in, so we don't have a problem down the road. Any further discussion?
Can I ask a question? Paragraph 19, where it talks about the easement, are we, is everyone happy with the language there, that that's the existing easement? We're not having the survey again and provide it. I see it on the survey, but I don't know if it's a 30-foot wide easement. I don't, you know, I just want to make sure that we're not being asked to incur additional expense here.
Well, we're only talking about Parcel A, right?
Right, but look at paragraph 19.
Additional conditions. Preventing 30-foot wide easements is pretty aggressive in this.
Okay.
Are we, are we talking about the existing 30-foot easement? If we are, we're fine, but how do we know? How do we know that that fits, you know, right for the reader? And I'm not sure that that description matches what's on the survey. If it does, we're fine, but I think we need clarification of that.
Well, isn't it the corridor that says, that delineated as 30-foot wide between the power line and the trail where it says Tuscarora Township remainder?
Yeah, except it's not 30-foot wide, wide all the way to the end.
Looks like it's still 30-foot wide to me, unless this is not to scale.
To the end of the parcel it is, but yeah.
To the end of the parcel, then it decreases when you get behind the 310.
Yeah, you're right. Yeah.
So I'm fine with the sales. There are no comps, but just that, that needs to be clarified.
Oh, I see what he's saying. Yeah, yeah, but it's still 30-foot wide, so.
13s look wide at Martha.
I don't think so.
No, it says 30 down at the bottom of the map.
Go all the way to the right.
That's the wrong rank.
You mean it's the wrong one?
Martha is at the bottom of the page, not the top of the page.
Yeah, that, that...
That's the 310 up there.
That's 310 up there.
Does that help?
I don't know.
Yeah, that's on 310. Yeah, is there any further discussion? All in favor?
I'd just like to reread the motion.
Sure.
So we're gonna move to sell Parcel A for $2,000 to United Methodist Church, i.e. the glow.
Or $2,000?
Yeah, I said for $2,000.
Okay. Yep.
Any further discussion?
Do you want authorization included in the motion for someone to sign up on this?
Yes.
So can I amend my motion to authorize either the supervisor or the clerk to close on the real estate?
He'll be here, he'll take care of it.
Okay.
Supervisor will take care of it.
So move to sell Parcel A for $2,000 to United Methodist Church, the glow.
And authorize the supervisor to sign closing documents.
Supervisor authorized to sign closing documents.
Jay, the church's name is wrong.
I'm sorry, was it?
Living Waters.
Living Waters.
They changed it, but on the page here, so what would you?
Living Waters.
Living Waters, okay.
Thank you.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Next item up? Hiring request. Jay?
Uh, yes, I'm just trying to get through this.
We got, we got time.
Yeah, we would like to...
You gotta make a motion.
I'll get the motion first. I'd like to move that we bring in an additional person for 20 to 30 hours per week at some, at $17 to $20 per hour depending on credentials.
Is there a second?
I'll support that.
Discussion? We talked about this in our workshop. The money's there, the workload is definitely there. It's gonna get worse, so I'd like to get that up online. I would like to see our, Chris Green, I'd like her to, if it's okay with everyone, I'd like her to supervise the part-timers. And I'd like to...
That would be a separate motion?
This motion.
Well, I'm just discussing, throwing some out there. And I'd like to see Chris Green and Jay Riedma as the selecting official as well.
What's the title of the person that we want?
Excuse me.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, it's no problem. So this is, to answer your question, it's for the office assistant.
Let me answer the question for the board. The purpose here is we have a part-time office assistant, roughly 20 hours a week, 20 to 22. And we, we believe and we know that we have a need to have a full-time office assistant. So by having possibly two different office assistants, not only do we have the ability of one to back up the other or other areas in the, in the office, but we will have the office open at longer hours for, for the community as well. Any questions?
Who made the motion?
I did.
Can you amend that to advertise until filled and have you and Chris Green be the selecting official?
All right, so I'll amend the motion to hire another temporary employee for up to 20 to 30 hours per week at $17 to $20 per hour, depending on credentials, with Chris Green and myself, the clerk, as the hiring officials.
Selecting officials.
Selecting officials.
Got no second? Any second?
I'll second it.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Next item, DNR grant. As you know, if we proceed with the sewer... Let me make the motion first. I move that we enter into a contract with NLEA to prepare the grant for new bathrooms at Devo Beach. Sarah, second?
I second that.
Okay, so as I was starting to say, sorry about that. There's a 75% grant available from DNR with the deadline of April 1st. NLEA believes that they can do it for the amount specified in the contract. We need new replacement bathrooms down there due to the new sewer system. Doug's been working on that for about a year, and we're probably looking at prefabs and a well that costs approximately $150,000. The most we could get from this particular grant is 75%, which is a lot better than normal. Usually it's 50/50.
Yep.
So we would not know about that award until December.
Right. And that would make it possible for us to apply for the grant, and even if we got it, if, for whatever reason, the sewers did not go through, we could always decline the grant. But I think we need to be proactive on this.
Again, I tried to talk to the Parks Commission, but I couldn't get a call back, so we're running out of time.
Yeah, April 1st, yeah, we're running out of time. They have to do a lot of work to get that grant application in by then.
So is this the, what the amount, 112,500, or the 75% of this, right?
I'm sorry?
This is the projected cost, and it'd be 75% of the grant of this amount?
Yes.
It'd be like $112,500?
Yes, ma'am.
Yep.
I just wanted to make sure.
And they're charging us 95 an hour, not to exceed $5,000 for the grant?
Correct.
Say that again?
She's charging us 95 per hour, not to exceed $5,000.
To apply the grant.
She's gonna write it and apply for it. I'm gonna be working on that to help save some money.
All right. So can I restate the motion, or do you want to? Do we have any more discussion?
No, 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 no more discussion. You can restate the motion, go ahead.
Move to apply for the DNR grant to fund the new replacement bathrooms, which are quartered through the sewer system, which would be a 75% grant.
And to hire NLEA to, to prepare that grant.
And this will be by December 2024?
The DNR will make a decision by then.
Yeah.
Any more discussion?
Nope.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Our next one is delegation of authority. Jay?
Delegation. This has to do exactly with the assigned general funds. I'd like to make a motion. It has to do with Parks, obviously.
Yeah, let me make that motion.
Please.
I move that we give the clerk approval to assign specific funds from Parks in accordance with our township policy manual, which are unrestricted assigned funds. Is there a second?
I second that.
Okay, so what we're trying to do here, MCL 41 dot 422 says, "A charge for admission to the place of recreation," and that would include rentals, "may be made by the Board of Commissioners." That's the Parks Commission. "But the charge shall not exceed the charge for admission to state parks of this state. Funds received from such admissions shall be used for the improvement of the places of recreation." So in the past, they have taken the money, as I understand it. Please correct me, you two, if I'm wrong. In the past, they've done that, but we couldn't find anything in the minutes that authorized it. So when someone rents a park...
Like for a tournament or something?
Right, or when we charge the school or the Little League, that money should go, be set aside for improvements according to the law for places of recreation.
And the improvements should be for things like facilities, equipment, and tools.
Correct.
So that we can assist Parks Commission in maintaining and improving those parks.
Yeah, and, and for example, a replacement truck.
Right.
I know on their CIP, they have, our basketball courts really need it. This puts the money aside over and above their budget that we give them every year.
Right, so Parks money stays with Parks. It's just that it's in this...
And this doesn't have anything to do with the boat launch, because that's a separate restricted fund. Am I correct?
Correct.
Any further discussion?
Well, the funds would be, would use our miscellaneous receivables that we just purchased to basically account for all these funds, so that not only do we have a policy, which this would be... So that not only do we have a policy, which this would be, we also would have the ability through procedures and the system, miscellaneous receivables, to account for the funds. So there's no misunderstanding as to what came in and where it goes.
Right, up till now, it was just understood by the clerks or whoever it is without anything in writing to actually give them the approval to do that. So this way, there's actual policy on the Parks money, whatever money that they bring in for renting the ball fields or parks or whatever, will stay with them. It just won't be part of their budget, but it'll stay with them for improving, like the truck, like if the Zamboni broke down, like they need to do well. Things like that, that is over and above what their budget could facilitate. So this actually puts it in writing, and this makes it solid then.
Just a comment.
Any further discussion?
Just to make sure I got the motion correct here. Move to give, or give the clerk approval to assign Parks-related.
Income.
Receivables.
Yep.
To the assigned portion of the general fund.
That's correct.
Assigned accounts, I'll say, of the general fund.
Jan, you okay with that? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Next budget adjustments. Jay, do you wanna make a motion about the Eagles Nest? Or is there a motion?
Uh, yes, I'd like to make a motion that we remove.
Can you talk in a second?
Yeah, I'm sorry. There you go. In our Eagles Nest Fund, we have over seventy thousand dollars, seventy thousand, six hundred and eleven dollars and seventy-five cents that has been on the books for the past three years and should be removed because it's been, been three years and our ability to receive payments have now gone to the wayside. And we can find no data that would say that there are any additional payments that are due. In other words, this is similar to what we have with the library, where they had fifty thousand dollars on the books, but they never had any cash deposits to go in the bank, you know, with those fifty thousand dollars. This is a similar situation. We cannot equate what we're accounting for with what we actually have, you know, cash on hand or, or as I just said, cash receivables. So I'd like to make the motion to remove the balance of seventy thousand, six hundred and eleven dollars, seventy-five cents from the Eagles Nest Fund, which is GL eight sixty zero 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 eighty-five.
Is there a second?
I second that.
Can you explain that to me now?
So, so I've just gotten to the place, working with, with Chris, to be able to sit down and prove accounts. Generally speaking, we like to look at balance sheets and make sure that the numbers on the balance sheet are real. Eagles Nest was a special assessment district. The amortization on that district ran out. Theoretically, at the end of the taxing season, the December tax rule would have included all of the assessment. At the end of February, if those assessments weren't paid, they would have been purchased by the county. So it's inconceivable to me that we didn't get paid the seventy thousand, six hundred and eleven dollars and seventy-five cents that's currently showing due from residents. I'm not sure what happened. Chris has looked at it, she's not sure what happened. But there, there are some accounts that could use some cleanup. This is not the only one. My plan was for us to aggregate all of these adjustments and see where, how big the issue was. Sometimes they cancel each other out. So this is just one of several accounts that will probably have to have some adjustments made to accommodate proving out balances to where we know what it should be, it's just not there currently.
Any further discussion?
I do have one more comment about that, sorry. I was, I was an auditor some time ago, and I have to say that, that the world of auditing is very different now than it was when I was an auditor. And I was, let's just say, disappointed at the level of engagement of our auditors this year. So, they, I would have expected them to look at this and ask more questions than they did.
Any further?
Yeah, just like I said earlier, though, we did have, we asked the library board to have a board action to remove the fifty thousand dollars. And they agreed there was no cash, there was no investments that related to those, to that fifty thousand dollars. And we've worked that through the auditors as well. So all we're doing is a similar situation here, based on Jan's description of the situation, trying to get the books corrected, and we'll work with our auditors and make sure we.
So the library was a little bit different situation. What happened in real, in the accounting was that fifty thousand dollars was moved into an account intended for Edward Jones, but the physical moving of the money didn't happen.
Any further discussion?
That's true.
Any further discussion?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. I, I move that, in accordance with our special meeting of January eighteenth for our semi-annual budget review, that we approve the budget adjustments in your packet.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? I would like to commend this board, Doug and Parks. It really was incredible when we went through this, that we have over a forty percent increase in revenue, mostly due to grants and land sales and some taxes. And in addition to that, we had the first balanced budget for decades. Yet, this board has been underspent at the halfway point, which is a good sign. We're not there yet. So these budget adjustments actually reduce our expenditures by a thousand dollars. Despite the increase. Now, that doesn't include capital improvements that we've been doing for Parks and cemeteries and others. Any more discussion?
No.
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, board. Public comment, please. Sit right up, any public comment?
I got a.
Aye.
Good evening. My name is Helen Miller. I attended the January second, twenty twenty-four Board of Trustees meeting and was very impressed by the presentation of Mr. Waldron on behalf of the Tuscorora Fire Department. They truly are an amazing benefit to our community. In his presentation, he stated that the townships they serve had all been mailed a letter last year regarding that they would be requesting an increase in their budget. The reaction on the board with several members stated that they never saw that letter. It must not have been received. In other words, they knew nothing about it. That seemed curious to me, so I went to the township website. And under your April fourth, twenty twenty-third board packet, under correspondence, when we used to have correspondence included, there is the letter from the fire department. I realize that almost a year has passed, but I just thought it should be noted that our township did receive this letter. It was date stamped, initialled and included in the board packets. In attending prior board meetings over the past several years, I remember many citizens, including several of you now serving on the board, asking for correspondence and transparency to be included in the meetings. I have recently noticed that for several months, there has not been any correspondence included in the board packets. And now, since the December twenty twenty-third meeting, it is not even listed as an agenda item. I would also like to request that the board make a priority of fixing the township hall's two parking lot lights outside. The problem has been noted for several years. And rather than saying, "We need new lights, but they will be expensive," they truly need to be a priority. There are meetings, library programs, and even Indian River special events held after dark in which the parking lot is heavily used. I wonder what the cost will be, God forbid, when an adult or a child is hit in the parking lot due to the extreme low visibility. Before, only one light was out, now both the lights are out, and it's extremely dark out there. I would also like to suggest that at some point, the board consider a town hall meeting. This could be held from six to six forty-five, prior to a scheduled monthly meeting, to avoid having an additional night for another meeting. It appears that a lot of citizens come before the board during public comments and become frustrated when they want answers. But during this segment, all we can do is talk and receive no response. Thank you for your time and effort.
Public comment?
Yes, my name's Patrick McGinnis, and I've got a comment concerning Agenda Item Eight. Under Old Business Resolution Three, the Resolution Three as presented in the board packet posted on Friday is different than the resolution read in tonight by the appointed supervisor, Bob Kramer. Therefore, going way, way back in history, when I took corporate law classes, the written word always overrides the oral word, and there's a discrepancy. Therefore, I don't think your passing of Resolution Three is valid. Thank you.
Public comment?
My name is Richard Miller, and I'd like to make a couple of comments on the airport. I spent a few years on airports, and I can tell you, unless you have fifteen. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Unless you have fifteen landings a day, you can't account for the, pay for the counting or the collection of the money. And the other thing is, if you have a tight on fee, it's rent. And it makes the airport responsible for the airplane. It's more safety, so think about that one.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. Public comment?
Go ahead.
My name's Gary Frisky. I don't live on Chippewa Beach, but lived on the end of it, there's Wobbin Wood subdivision. Chippewa Beach was repaved three years ago, I think, this summer coming up. That road is cracking up all over the place there. And I know they tar sealed all those cracks, I think, last year. But we're still paying basically five hundred dollars per lot on that yet. And then, you know, the original cost is about twenty-two hundred for my, for my lot. And then I still got extra, I'm still paying five hundred bucks on that. But I gotta think that thing's gonna go to hell in the next three years. And then, what kind of guarantees on that? On that pave right now, who's gonna repave it, you know, say, three, four, five years from now? And the other thing is, they stopped it right where they did. And there's about another hundred fifty, two hundred yards. They could have made it to our subdivision to the paved road, and that, that road's a piece of work there too right now. And they never did put a decent base on that, like they should have. Like, I talked to the old supervisor here a couple of years ago about it. But we've never got nothing done with it yet. And still, now it's got potholes and everything again, and of course, the bottom just falls out, you know, when the frost, luckily this road aren't much frosted right now, but, so I don't know if we get much worse right now. But I don't know what kind of guarantees on that to go back on that paved road that they did three years ago now. That's my big question. Because we're gonna be redoing that thing ten years from now. That's it.
Thank you, sir. Public comment?
Well, I'll start with agreeing with Mr. Waldron. As someone who does a lot of business at Owl Marina, it would be nice if that road was paved. But my name's Rod Grundy. After watching some past meetings, which I missed a while back, I'd like to address some comments made about me personally. I'll start with Mr. McGinnis's comments regarding me disrupting meetings and swearing. I think we can all see the hypocrisy in that comment. Yes, I did do that twice out of frustration. The difference between him and I is that I never approached the board or threatened anyone. I also approached Mr. Ridley the following week and apologized for my behavior instead of doubling down on it. I was also not charged with disrupting a public meeting, meeting or made to do community service. I'm also not under a deferred prosecution agreement like Mr. McGinnis. I simply spoke from my seat out of frustration with Mr. McGinnis for disrupting pretty much every township meeting for the last year or so. The other time is when his wife thought it was more important to defend her husband's criminal charges at a planning commission meeting instead of actually working on the master plan. What me, what people need to understand is that we have a small group of people here who are butthurt and want to derail all the progress being made in this township. It's one thing to dislike a board member, but it's another to derail progress that affects the rest of the community. We've seen it in the past with Mr. Hall's motocross track, and we're seeing it now with things like Mr. Grundy's six million dollar condo project, short-term rentals, and the list goes on. And now, and now that those efforts are not working here in the township, past board members are trying to do it at the county level. My point being is you don't have to like anyone up here. You don't have to like me, you don't have to like anybody. But when it affects the progress in the community, everybody pays the price. And people are letting personal agenda and emotions derail what's best for the entire community. Thank you.
Thank you.
A public comment? Okay, public comment is closed, board comment?
I have, I have a comment, though. Thank you, Rod. I'm gonna play off of you. This has been an incredible year since twenty twenty-two November elections, when Jay Reedsmann won the election for the township clerk. Since then, we have been dedicated to the principle that the people of Tuscorora deserve to see what their tax dollars are paying for. We have been focused on our infrastructure as well as working to have a more efficient, more effective and more accountable government. From the very first, we knew we had to get organized in order to prepare ourselves for the responsibilities the people have given us. We instituted the MTA Township of Excellence program to help us with first-time-ever written policies and procedures. This was a monumental task. But it took us away from the good old boy slap-on-the-back type of government to a system of government, everyone can be treated fairly.
Excuse me. Order, please.
Everyone can be treated fairly, and those in office are held accountable. We have been diligent on making sure important information is posted online and all board decisions are made in an open forum. No more backroom meetings or decision-making. For the first time in recent history, we have instituted a balanced budget, a capital improvement project plan, and are working with our committees and our entities such as Sheboyden County Commissioners, Sheboyden County Road Commission and the Planning Commission to make sure the people of Tuscorora are a priority. Our community infrastructure plan has surpassed expectations, and there is more to accomplish. Finally, the much-needed Club Road had been repaired and repaved. And we are currently working on getting that avenue repaved as well. The parking area of Marina Park in cooperation park driveways have been improved as well as the road to Oak Hill Cemetery. Gravel have been laid on washouts on McMichael Road, and more roads on the west side are slated for improvements. We are cooperating with the road commission to help improve neglected road ends throughout the township, including several on the west side. This will improve local access to our lakes and rivers and will reinstate the people's rights to enjoy and access our waterways once again. We have completed the boat docks on the Sturgeon River, and many community volunteers have landscaped that area. The river steps have been completed and landscaped through those many volunteers as well. Those same committed people have volunteered to help scrape and paint the underside of the Straits area, the Straits Highway Bridge this spring, and to give an upgraded look to our town. They have already worked on the Juno Street Road End and are looking forward to working on Lake Street Road End and the Hamilton Road End as well. We are fortunate to live in a township that has so many community spirit and talented individuals. Our cemeteries have been in need of some serious attention for many years, and the neglect has been overwhelming. Let's face it, our maintenance crew could only do so much. We have put in over sixty thousand dollars worth of improvements in Oak Hill Cemetery just this year. We have repaired the fencing, cut and/or trimmed many of the tree overgrowth, as well as refurbished the dilapidated. as refurbished the dilapidated cemetery building. The building improvement expenses was covered by a $47,000 blight grant from the Michigan State Land Bank Agency. We are also working on improving your neighborhoods. We have been devoted to eliminating blight throughout the township and removed two abandoned and dangerous mobile homes on Front Neck Avenue. These structures have been a thorn in the side of the residents in this neighborhood for decades, and we were able to get them removed at no cost to the township taxpayers. We also reinstituted the Community Trash Day event, and because it was such a huge success, we have already planned it again for this summer. Our community airport, we need some costly upgrades, and because of the tree harvesting that's currently being done at the airport, these upgrades can be made without dipping into general tax money to do them. The runway has been crack sealed and the lines have been painted, along with the lines at the parking lot next to the Chamber of Commerce and at Devo Beach. We saved a lot of money by not hiring a painting company to do it, bought the paint ourselves, and with dedicated volunteers, got the job done. The Parks Commission received a $100,000 grant from the county, and they are improving the bathrooms and concession stand building and have already repaired or replaced much of the bleachers. They are also working on the expansion of the beach wall at Devo Beach to help prevent sand from blowing onto the sidewalks, and this will help to slow down the veterans' bricks from erosion damage. Our 4th of July fireworks was the biggest, and if I do say myself, the best we have ever had. We are currently working on this year's fireworks event, and if you'd like to be a part of that and donate to make this happen, there's a can in the lobby, or just give us a call. Let's make this occasion a community event to remember. I have left the biggest infrastructure improvement to the last, the $14 million sewer expenditure project. With the help of our legislatures, and we have secured a $3.5 million earmark from Congress and additional grants and loans from the state and other federal agencies. We are waiting on one more permit, hopefully this week, and then we will go out for bid. This has been a citizen-driven project in the making for several years, and we are actually at the cusp of getting this off the ground. There have been a lot of accomplishments, but because there's so much more to do, we are not finished yet. These are exciting times for the citizens of Tuscorora and positive times. Many more opportunities have been presented all the time, and I urge everyone to look around and see these improvements. Volunteer if you're able, and enjoy God's blessings of living in Tuscorora Township. Thank you.
Board comments? I'd like to. Ms. Miller? Oh, she's gone. The lights out in the parking lot. I do want to address that. We have a grant that I wrote along with Chief Temple and Kelsey from the library. We all worked together, and Ron, and I believe it was Ron 260?
The grant?
$260,000.
$260,000, $280,000.
We have a lot of problems with this building, especially on the library side, and now some deterioration on the police department stairway. And our number one concern in that grant was the lights. They're gonna have to be addressed, but we need to wait until we get word on the grant. We were supposed to know by December. Now they said sometimes this month. So if we don't get the grant, then we'll get with the library board and make a priority list of what we gotta fix.
Is there any way we can just put the bulbs in now? I know the bulbs are expensive because they're LED, but it is really dark out there. If we can just put the bulbs in there, because the posts, I know, are rotting away, but...
They're rusting away.
The lights still work, we just need new bulbs in them.
Yeah, that's true.
Well, I'll talk to Doug and see if he can get a surprise. Let me write that down.
Those are high-intensity bulbs, correct?
Correct.
And then Doug was also looking into some LED replacements, which would obviously be a lot less energy usage. But we don't really know if they're rotting away at the bottom. There's a cover plate at the bottom that's rotting away, so we'd have to pull that off and really inspect it to, you know, to validate that.
Well, what we could do is, and I'm just thinking out loud, is if we don't get the grant, you know, we're gonna have to do something, so. The other thing I wanted to talk about was the gentleman who talked about Chippewa Beach Road. You're absolutely right. For the first time in a long time, we're giving the road commission almost $50,000 for gravel. It's not gonna solve all the problems, but you're absolutely right. That area out there's gotta be crack sealed. I intend to go to every road commission meeting. I went to one Thursday, and we spoke for 40 minutes on roadheads. I will tell you, we're trying to work with the road commission, but sometimes they're very difficult to work with, and I'll just leave it at that. But we have a good relationship with them, and I'll run down there and take a look at the crack ceiling. Real quick on Navanoy. I would like to start that process to the end of the road. It's just gonna take some time to go through the steps. So Mr. Weber's been really, really good about contacting all the landowners. Also about the sewer system. Phase 3 sewers out on both sides of the river, Howe Marine and Indian River Marine, Marine Land, all that. We're not even close yet. We just don't have the resources right now to follow up because of everything else going on. We do have a million-dollar bill passed by the House for Phase 3. That would pay for the engineering costs, and that would pay for some plant upgrades to get ready for Phase 3. But assuming that the Senate will agree, which they did not, by the way, we applied to, for Phase 3, we applied to both the Senate and the House, and the Senate, we didn't make the cut, but we did in the House. So I hope we get the million dollars. If we do, we can get started, but even if we got that million dollars, I don't see sewers in Phase 3 for five years, maybe five to seven years. If anything, since the last sewer system that was put in here, I've seen a lot of bureaucracy in my day in the federal government, but I'll be honest with you, I've never seen anything like going through this sewer system. It's just, it's just awful. It's sometimes depressing. But I just wanna repeat, my personal telephone number's on the website. You can call me, and if I can't reach you, I'll get back to you. Ron, you had something?
Nothing immediate. I just wanna kind of break the ice for probably next month. If you remember, a lot of media coverage at the end of the legislative session for '23, this was a lame duck power grab by Lansing to remove public siting, local siting for wind and solar. This has nothing to do with your position on wind and solar. It has to do with local control over zoning issues. And unfortunately, it followed a number of other, what in my opinion are state overreaches, sand and gravel. There were several things during the '23 session that minimized local control at the township, village, county level, where the state took this control against the very vocal will of the people. The MTA was opposed to this, the NCL was, or the Michigan, Michville League was opposed to it. There's media coverage that says that 87% of Michigan voters are against this. So there's a group called Citizens for Local Choice that started a ballot referendum. They had their ballot language approved. They have petitions coming out now. The language has already been vetted, and what they're trying to do is they're just trying to repeal Part 8 of Public Act 233, which was the last one of '23. It was literally passed in the dark of night on the last legislative day. So I'm not really asking you to take a position on wind and solar. I am asking you to take a position on returning local control to local governments, local counties, local townships. We will have those petitions available once they arrive. They're going, they won't download them, they wanna send us physical copies. We'll have them available at the window, we'll have them available at the table in the lobby. I would recommend that in March, we very likely will have a board resolution where the board will support this movement. I personally support it, and I would ask that you would as well.
Or comment?
I have a comment. I just want to say, you know, our community is really a tight-knit community, you know, we're kind of like a family, and sometimes families don't always see eye to eye, and there's a little emotion that gets involved, you don't agree, sometimes we have to agree to disagree, and temper flare and certain emotions, and I just really appreciate the fact that, was it Rod?
Rod Grundy, yeah.
Got up and, you know, said publicly that he apologized. I think that speaks volumes for his integrity and character as a person, and this job is not easy. There is tons of reading and a lot of follow-up and emails that we get from the correspondents with the sewer. There's a lot of big projects coming up, and we are trying to do our best to move forward for the whole community. So I would just ask that you continue to pray for us, keep us in your prayers in our community, and if you can volunteer and do anything, come on out and help. If you're not afraid to roll up your sleeves and get dirty, come on out and help us in some of these projects to improve our community, beautify it, keep it nice. So we are a bright shining star of the north, and I just wanna thank you for your support and let us serve you, because that's what we're here to do. And, you know, if you need to talk to us, our numbers are on the website, and we'll try and be better at corresponding and getting some of this information out. So thank you.
Or comments?
I just wanted to repeat my thanks to the library. Those meetings were very productive. I think we have a process now that works for their accounting and our accounting. Having successfully gotten through that, I would like very much to see that we get the same thing done with Parks Department and perhaps with the Fire Department, so we can cut them a chapter. That's all I got.
Jan?
I just wanted to mention that it's now official, there is a fourth election this year. The school board is gonna have a bond issue on there, and I'm sure many people know about that. They've advertised it, but they didn't register until this past week, I believe, so it's now official, another election.
Is that, can you tell us why?
It was May, it's first Tuesday in May, I believe. I don't know exactly.
Okay.
And then we'll have a public accuracy test in here for the February 27th election, and then Thursday at 1:00 PM.
Just one last thing I neglected to thank, all the volunteers who went with Ron and I to the road commission meeting. I think they got an eye opener, so thank you. Any other comments? Motion to adjourn? So moved. We're adjourned. Thank you very much for coming, folks.